Okay, well, it is 7:30, and I think we'll go ahead and get started with our work session for Monday, July 7th. This is, I know, a series we've been having. We just had engineering last week, I guess it was, and now we have information about the fire department and their accreditation. So I'll turn it over to...
My apologies. Yes, again, I think the mayor probably just said this, that the councils asked for these conversations with each department and every department. This is an opportunity to better understand service levels being provided and give an opportunity for council to ask questions directly of the departments. So we thought we'd start out right with fire, and so I would ask that you work with us on schedules, because we may try and schedule more of these that are off normal Monday mornings to get as many of these through as quickly as possible. So thank you. And Chief, I appreciate you being the first to go through this. I know you've got a lot to go through, so I'm going to turn it right over to you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Manager, Mayor, members of council, John Tipp, Chief of the Fire Department. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about fire services and accreditation. But before I get started, we have a lot of turnover within the fire department. We're always promoting excellence to the next opportunity. So the senior leadership team behind me, one that you know, Jonathan Lund is our fire marshal. Andy Jewels is a new assistant chief, and he takes over in the spot that was previously held by Percy Coleman in charge of our operations. Next to the fire marshal is Craig Youngblood, our new assistant chief, and he is over the maintenance section, training, and special ops. And next to him is District Chief Brian Davis, who through a series of timings of things will become an assistant chief next year, so that they comprise the leadership team. The only other people here are also fire department people, our union president, Joe Van Hollen, Nick Schumacher, also a leader within the union, and so is Dave Deary, and also one of our best senior medics. So a little bit about the presentation before I get started, because we had several tracts of information that the fire department needed to get in front of the council. One of them is the description of the fire services. One of them is about accreditation, and also follow-up on station aid and the south side and the pilot, all those kinds of things. So I used the Engage Des Moines template, because the audience for this isn't just the council, and it's a description of fire services. So I'll use that template to describe services. And the handout that you have is more narrative than I'm going to read to you, but it also serves as a handout that you can take with you. It might help you answer questions when people have a question about our hazardous materials team or our technical rescue team and things like that. You will notice throughout the presentation that the accreditation update comes at the end, but I'm going to use the word accreditation quite a bit throughout, because it has shaped our operations, our administration, and this presentation. So you'll see examples of that work throughout this presentation. We're also going to talk about some initiatives that are relatively new, that are making positive impacts within our fire services. But we'll also go into some greater detail about some of the differences in the reliability of the resident experience on the south side of Des Moines with fire services versus the north side. That's directly tied to the pilot we ran down at Station 8 and continue to run. And then after that, we'll talk about the accreditation next steps. And similar to the Engage Des Moines, I have a request of five things for any residents that are watching that they can do to help the fire department, and of course, your questions. So getting started, Des Moines Fire Department, we assist the public from these locations. So we assist the public are the first four words of our mission statement, and so I like to start a lot of things with that, because after that, it's all the same, regardless of why people call. We want to be of assistance, and so that's where the stations are. But to give a better picture of our citywide system, here's the map that shows where the stations are within the city of Des Moines. Part of the accreditation process started with a community risk assessment, and also development of a standards of cover, how we cover the city and how we measure risk. Another part of that is our strategic plan. And so back to those first four words that we assist the public, that is our mission statement, to assist the public in the protection of life and property by minimizing the impact of fire, medical emergencies, and potential disasters or events that impact the community and environment. Nearly 30 years, I'm still trying to memorize it. But what's important about what comes after the first four words is that is the mission statement that existed prior to our strategic plan. And that strategic plan work was performed by 42 members of the fire department of all ranks and different levels of seniority, and that's unique. In 140 years, we have never used or involved all levels of the department to do our mission statement. They came up with several alternatives, and in the end chose the original one that they started with, surveyed the department, and so that's why our mission statement is what it is. They also did the work of having a conversation within their own groups of those 42 members, and came up with our core values, professionalism, integrity, dedication, honor, friendly service, and we are ready to serve. And the word "ready" is bolded, because it's not about just having talent. It's not about having done preparation, but are you actually ready? And so that bolded word means something, and it means something more, because it comes from all levels of the department. They also created our vision. We've had different kinds of vision statements. We've never had a ground-up written vision statement for the fire department, so this is also work that came through them to enhance the safety of Des Moines by providing the highest level of emergency services with dedicated, skillfully trained, and mission-focused professionals. And I probably should give the disclaimer, I purposely was not a part of the strategic plan. This needs to be by members of the department for the future of the department. But I see in the vision statement that they crafted, the input from the external stakeholders, the neighborhood associations, the businesses, the community leaders that were surveyed to say what they think is important in the fire department, and that is reflected in our vision. This slide is actually the same as the Engage Des Moines, where we wanted to relate the fire services to the strategic goals of the city. What are our core services? We are still called the fire department, but EMS makes up 70% of what we do. About half of that 70% would be considered a basic level service, or even a compassion care level of service. About half of that is advanced or paramedic level services. That'll be important later, as we talk about accreditation and risk analysis and things like that. We have a, our fire prevention bureau is the lead voice, but all members of the department participate in the prevention and education messages. That prevention and education messages is already starting to be shaped by later the mobile integrated healthcare philosophy on how do we help people to help themselves and not need our emergency assistance. We have fire engineering, and that's, it can be a bit of a misnomer for some. We have a position called an engineer on the fire department. That's the person that drives and operates the engines and the trucks. But we also have licensed fire protection engineers on the fire department. Jonathan Lund was the first fire protection engineer hired in 2008, and we've expanded that. That has been a great benefit to working with developers and businesses and figuring out what, how do you get to yes? What's the solution that works for good ideas as well as fire protection? So that's been great. I'll go into some detail about our specialized teams, and most people are familiar with our fire suppression. They always think engines and trucks, but it's also our medics and chief officers as well, and we'll talk about fire investigation in just a little bit. There are several new, and by new I mean since January of 2024, initiatives that we're pretty happy with. Our mobile integrated healthcare program really started with some good ideas from names you may not know. Shane Griffin is still an officer in the fire department, and some others started doing some research that led to the work that you're all familiar with, with John and Haley. That's also related, but not the same, as the acute care station, which is at Central Iowa Shelter and Services, where through relationships with people and recognizing people and seeing them where they are, we're helping them get what they need, not what we just can provide them a merry-go-round to the emergency room and back to the shelter again. The opioid response is incredibly new, but also starting to see some promise. It's a partnership with Polk County to intercede, or within 72 hours of an opioid overdose to do an intervention, that's the best window for getting that person help and hopefully not having the next opioid overdose. And we're currently still on track, probably getting tighter for occupation of, or being occupants of Station 4 by the end of this calendar year, and we have the accreditation process and the strategic plan. So first question a lot of people will ask about is what do you call those things? I want to call them, I want to call them a fire ladder, truck, engine apparatus, suppression vehicle. So I just thought I'd put this on here. On your upper left is a fire engine, and it does fire suppression and it does EMS. It's got a big pump on it, it's got a lot of water, and it's got a lot of hose, so the engine pumps the water to put the fire out. Lower left is the ladder truck. It too does suppression and EMS, but you can tell from the big honking ladder on top of it, it's about reaching things. It also has a pump, it also has a tank and hose, but it's the tools. It's a lot of the manual labor of a fire, but it goes on EMS calls. And on the right, it's one of our medic squads or ambulance, and while it's primarily an EMS vehicle, everyone on there is a firefighter, and they fight fires just like everybody else on the job. One of our primary services, as I said, is EMS. We started doing EMS in 1974, when the manager went to the fire chief and said, "Next week we're starting EMS. Figure that out." So we did. And since that time, we became an advanced life support service in the middle, early 80s, being doing paramedic level of care, and it has become the majority of our work and the majority of our training. We are a leader nationally in ROSC, or return of spontaneous circulation. Your heart stops, we respond, intervene, your heart beats again. And we're proud of that. We're more proud of that we are also a national leader in not just your heart starting again, but that you leave the hospital neurologically intact. That's better in Des Moines than 95% of the United States. We are just now starting a new initiative where to help trauma patients who have lost a lot of blood, knowing real savior there is to stop the bleeding and replace the blood, so we are carrying blood products. That is, that's a new service that we are doing right now. And the last bullet really is the most important part. Our people are amazing, they're really highly skilled, they're high-speed, low-drag people, and they do that with compassion for our parents, our patients and their families. We have a technical rescue team that's less than 25 years old, but when you think about rope rescue, confined spaces, trench operations, if there's a trench collapse, we have 32 members of the fire department who are trained to those standards, and are technicians in those specialties. We do a lot of in-house training, we do a lot of training with our partners. The IFF 40R confined space rescue classes are things that have been a great benefit to this team. These operations are low frequency but high risk. You have to be very good at what you do, and you have to be very good at what you do as a team for success with these responses. Our hazardous materials team, also trained to the technician level, and we are a FEMA type 1 level team. And what a lot of people don't realize is we don't just serve the city of Des Moines. We serve Des Moines, Polk County, and seven surrounding counties. So we're out there protecting 839,000 people regarding hazardous materials. We do training with those other counties. We are funded largely through Polk County on those 45 members who are trained to that level, but that's a longstanding agreement that has worked really well. No one city can stand up this by themselves without decimating the rest of their service. And so since the 1980s, we've been the leader in that. Matt Woody was kind of our initial master of all things hazardous materials. But there's two IFF master instructors that have impacted us and the state of Iowa probably more than any others. You'd be familiar with Captain Bob Suarez, who is recently retired, and Steve Hergenreter out of Fort Dodge, he retired out there as the chief. But they really have taken that initial work and taken it to a whole nother level. We do a lot with our partners that I haven't mentioned yet, the LEPC, the Joint Hazard Assessment Team, and the 71st Civil Support Team, which also has become a bit of a recruiting, because those people like to come join the fire department, and we like to have them with us. We have a water emergency team. Our water emergency team is largely out of stations 2 and 6, so East Walnut and Southeast 6th Street is where they're responding from. We do things on the surface of the water. We're not a scuba team, we're a swift water, surface water, and as well as ice rescues. The picture you have up there is of Dominic Madonia and Nate Jones and Brandon Gray, and about a year ago, they performed a two-boat tether, which is a really rare two boats tied to each other, first boats making the rescue and getting someone out of a low-head dam. Quick story about that. 25, 28 years ago, Rick Jacobson goes to a class to learn about swift water, so he could be on the wet team. And he gets to the end of the first day, and he says, "Isn't anybody going to talk about rescues at low-head dams?" And the instructor tells him, "Well, we usually just call Des Moines." So he made it his purpose, and that is his crew that did that really rare event, so I thought it would be fun to highlight them. Our fire prevention bureau probably does, works in a lot more areas than most people realize, maybe even just in the area of fire inspections, not just for occupancy permits and general safety, but hazardous operations, above and below-ground storage tanks. They work with mobile food vendors to make sure they're operating safely, high piled storage. And like I said previously, they provide fire protection engineering guidance with other departments and sometimes directly with different businesses. The reconstruction and sprinkling of the Eddie following the fire that killed four there, worked with the owner, was not required to sprinkle that building, but made the case, and they sprinkled that building, and they've had two fires since that were not newsworthy. So that's one good, one of the good outputs. They do a lot with the schools, they do a lot with the neighborhood groups, and they're doing more and more to replicate things about mobile integrated healthcare that they can apply to false alarms, food on the stove, things like that. The fire prevention bureau also is our investigative office. Again, since the 80s, a Des Moines fire department person has been paired with a Des Moines Police Department person to be two-person investigation teams. They bring different skills to the table. Our newest investigator is Yahtzee there, and I like to tell people, he's a friendly dog, you can't feed him. That's the only rule. He only eats when he trains, but he's not just a friendly dog who happens to be good at finding accelerants. He's a trained professional accelerants investigator who happens to be a friendly dog. So we do things with him during the day, but we don't take him out at night for public events and things. He kind of lives to, he lives to eat by training, and we don't mess with his downtime. Couple initiatives that are impacting our services, mentioned earlier, the mobile integrated healthcare, acute care station, opioid response, you're familiar with John and Haley, and this might be the closest I'm ever going to get to John facing a camera, so I get a good picture of Haley, and that's usually the position that John takes with that. A little bit about the impact that we are seeing from these efforts. About December of '23, I think, I was in front of the council, talking about, we identified 85 people that were responsible for 1,450 calls. They are our initial group of high-volume users. And so this group has done a lot of research and worked with a lot of people to try to figure out how do they meet people where they're at and get them the services they need, and this is what we're starting to see. So our total calls for this year so far are down about 2%. They're down 300, 400 runs, something like that. But that includes an increase in a new type of call, which is the mobile integrated healthcare. When they go out to someone's home, which is primarily where they go, they do outreach at the homeless encampments, but 90% of the outreach they are doing are in people's houses and apartments. They're not with the homeless. And so that counts as the call. So those, they've done this year around 130 calls like that, but every time they go out, they make that difference. And so what we're seeing in our EMS calls by month is we're down 4%. We haven't had a, we haven't had a shift like that since the pandemic, which literally changed all of the, all of our call volumes by quite a bit, but we're very encouraged by that. That's not predictive that that will go on forever, but we had been experiencing a 3% to 5% increase in call volume for a decade. Last year was the first year of mobile integrated healthcare, it was nearly flat, it's about 1%. This year, we're tracking down 4% so far for the year. At the acute care station at Central Iowa Shelter and Services, basically, we've had a light-duty person at the shelter that people that are at the shelter are coming through the shelter, they can come to. We've started, you know, having relationships with those people, that we know their name, we know what medicine they're on, we can ask them questions about how they're doing. And that is, that is moving the needle on transports. You can see where, at this point last year, we had, we'd been dispatched, meaning someone called 911, and we had to send an ambulance and/or an engine over to the shelter 260 times. That's now 162 times, because we're having that conversation in the building, and they're waiting for a clinic visit, or they just wanted someone to talk to, or whatever it was. But when we are in there, when we're staffing the acute care station, 90% of those contacts do not result in a transport. It's a really significant thing. I think as long as that relationship can be held, those numbers will hold. On the, on the right side there, the Narcan administration, we don't have any reason to believe that that, we're very happy about being 41% down on the administration, but we don't have anything that's predictive in that. It's a very volatile type of number. The smaller the numbers are, the more volatility you can have. Not to say in a cold way, but if you get a shipment and a lot of fentanyl into a community in a short period of time, you can have a spike. Yes, sir.
Chief, going back to the acute care station, how many hours of the day is that staffed?
It's normally staffed from, I don't have the actual hours in front of me, 0700 till 11 o'clock at night.
Every day of the week?
Every day of the week. The overnight, the numbers aren't as good, when there's no one there. We have a much higher percentage of someone calling to be dispatched and taken to the hospital.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the overview of our operations. We are a citywide service, and you know, 215,000 residents from 11 stations, the teams that I described, but we respond to over 33,000 calls for service a year, and our system has to be evaluated on all those calls in all parts of town, and they're not the same. And we're going to, we're going to talk about that. How we dispatch is also part of the answer to the question, what, how do you decide what to send to my emergency, and why does an engine always come to my EMS call? And that depends, but there is a system to it. So when the dispatcher takes that call, they ask the right questions, and those questions have been embedded to figure out what's needed. And then they use technology and the research that we've done to provide the right resources. So using the accreditation methodology, that community risk assessment and standards of cover, we have gone through hundreds of call types and predetermined how many people it takes to do each task, and then whether this is a low-risk, a medium-risk, or a high-risk event, and that's what informs those response needs. So there's, there's three basic areas. There's, in addition to that, the frequency of the call type, a breathing difficulty would be a call type. What's the frequency of that occurring within the system, you know, to determine what kind of resources to do? The community consequence, that could be, that could be a human consequence, a health and safety consequence, it could be a financial one for, you know, type of fire or a toxic release of something. And then the organizational impact, our impact, how many people from our system does it take to respond to that call? Now that's, is another part of the accreditation, that's the effective response force. For a breathing difficulty, that's normally three people it takes to do that. Our ambulances carry two people, so the way you get the third person is you send the ladder truck or the fire engine with them. That's why the additional. So using all that methodology is what allows the dispatcher to say, "Engine one, medic one, you're responding to this breathing difficulty."
Chief, you said that was...
Chief, you said that was part of the accreditation?
Using that methodology of going through all of the call types, doing, it's called the task analysis within there to determine how many, how many people, how many hands does it take to do whatever?
Yeah. So the methodology is part of the accreditation. Is there a result, or is there a next step that's also part of the accreditation? It's not just analyzing. I mean, there's a level of response that, does the accreditation set that response level to?
No. What we've, what I've described so far is the, from that community risk assessment that was created to say, okay, what are the risks in town? And then there's standards of coverage to say, here's how you're going to handle them. That, that illuminates that methodology for, here's how we respond. So we've taken that, those two accreditation buckets are now full, and now we have the strategic plan bucket that we, I'll talk about here in a little bit. In the next steps, the self-assessment manual is when you take those first two buckets and you have your conversation here and within the fire department to say, we're now setting the level. We recognize against national standards where we might be those benchmarks and things, but it's when we are finishing that self-assessment manual to say, you know, the benchmark for response is four-minute travel time after a minute 20 turnout time, and we want everyone to be there in eight minutes. Does that make sense for our geography? Does that make sense, whatever? And then that's what we say is our. So when the public can go online and say, how's the Des Moines Fire Department meeting up against this, this measure? I want them to be able to see that in real time, so they can judge us every day on whether we're meeting that or not. But it's methodology, pre-work, and the self-assessment model. The self-assessment model is a piece we haven't done. And that'll be, that's, that'll be towards the end of that.
More questions?
Oh, yeah.
And you haven't, you haven't done that for what reason, since we've been working on this for 10 years? What, what reason have you not did what we've asked you to do that you told us? You stood here and said it would be two to three years to finish it. Now you're telling him we haven't even did part of the study, and it's 10 years later. So why? And I'll, and I'll, and I'll look at you too, because you haven't held him accountable in any way, shape, or form over the last 10 years. Hang on a second. Over the last 10 years, and now he's telling another council member that we haven't even started that process yet.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. You can either answer now or we can finish.
Well, I'd like to answer now.
Well, the problem is that he's talking more about the accreditation.
I'd like to know why he's telling Councilman Mandelbaum that he hasn't even started that process yet, and he said 10 years ago that it would take two to three years to finish the whole thing.
Yeah, let me take a stab at it.
Go ahead and take a stab at it, because I think everybody, including the cameras and the people at home, would like to know why this has taken 10 years.
So understand accreditation in any department is a journey, not just, not just a plaque at the end of the day. It's about going through all the department's processes, policies, strategic plans are developed. We look at best practices. This is one example of that. Accreditation allows us to make sure we are measuring ourselves against others that perform well. We rely on our subject matter experts at every level, not just the department directors to help in that regard. Developing strategic plans are part of accreditation. This is, again, the norm with other departments. I think it's, I think it's incredibly crucial to understand that because we've taken the decision and the path forward to eventually get to accreditation, we are already reaping the rewards through finding new service level opportunities, working in the weeds, deep in the weeds to understand things like this. What are the appropriate calls? What are the appropriate resources that are necessary to address different response requests? So what I'm, what I'm telling you is, we are already reaping the rewards of the accreditation process, and we're able to continue forward, whereas others, frankly, and I don't know that we've had this conversation at the council level, it's not unusual for other departments to start the accreditation process and realize they're not going to be able to attain it and shut it off. That's not the case here. We are continuing to make progress step by step, but it is a long journey, and we want to do it right, not fast. We want to make sure we are keeping our target on the industry best practices. So that's, that's my level, and then I let the experts and the director tell me about, hey, we discovered this opportunity through the accreditation process. Can we spend more time on this? Can we get more resources? And, and you're right, whether or not there's additional resources, it does fall on me and the council. That's why you're going to continue to be involved in this. But yeah, that's, that's my explanation why it's taking that.
10 years to get, to get a strategic plan and an accret, and any other type of study? 10 years?
But there's a lot of, yeah, okay. Why don't we go ahead and finish the rest of the presentation?
Sure, absolutely. 10 years.
Progress is being made.
Progress is being made without any type of, he sat here, you sat here and told us it would take two to three years in, in 2015. Two to three years. Out of your mouth, you said that.
Well, I think the one thing too is...
We're 10 years into this.
Okay, but we have also added a lot of things within, if this mobile integrated health is part of it. And I appreciate the time, and I appreciate, but it costs money, and it takes time, and I'd rather do it right. And I'm not saying we can't go faster if you want to, you know, but I don't know how much longer, but why don't we see what the presentation is?
I'm sure all the other departments have taken 10 years to finish their strategic plan in this, in this organization.
Well, we don't know the work that the other ones have been involved, so let's get through the presentation.
I know the work. I've sat here for 11 years. I know, I know.
Okay, I appreciate that. Let's go ahead and do this presentation.
Got it.
All right. Thank you. So key, a couple of key definitions and metrics for really what'll be the, the rest of the conversation and getting into how we apply this to the pilot and everything else. One of them is the idea of planning zones, and that's just generally the geography around the station. So if we say planning zone eight, we're talking about Station Eight, planning zone 10, et cetera. First, due area reliability. That is really the resident's experience. That is the, I pick up the phone, does someone get to my house in a reasonable amount of time? And do they, do they do that not on an average well, but do they do that to the 90th percentile nine times out of 10? One of the things that we've learned through the accreditation process, and you can see when you look back and how we measured things before, we did a lot of things based on average response time. And response time, when the city was doing their resident, the resident surveys, that was always top. When we did the internal state, external stakeholders, that was top. But if you use average response times, you end up with a Station 10 where it is. You end up with skewed numbers by having the shelter next to Station One. You end up with not, not building a Station 11 because most of Station Three's calls were close to the station. It's how you don't move Station Four to the northwest because of the pocket north of there. So it becomes important to say, how often or how quickly and how frequently does a unit get to someone's house in that amount of time? And that's the resident experience. That's, that is something that's uniquely different from using the accreditation model to how pretty much everybody but Chief Williams in the, in the eighties looked at everything. Another unit is availability, is someone available for a call for service? And then less expensive in this, less impactful in this conversation is, is the unit hour utilization, or how busy is something?
Can I just make sure I understand that? The metric piece?
Mm-hmm.
So we have that on average response time, but what you're saying is you're going to present, when we talk about reliability and resident experience, we're not looking at average, we're looking at the percentage of time that a call is responded to within a certain period of time.
Yes. The goal is always the 90th percentile. So if you went out 10 times and eight of those times, you're, you're there in three minutes, and the ninth time, you're there at four minutes, and the 10th time, you're there at five minutes, then your 90th percentile is four minutes.
Okay.
Nine out of 10 times, that was your longest response. And it is, it is, I said before, we do 33,000 calls a year. The system has to be designed for, for all of those. And as important as the geographic location of those stations are, one thing that my predecessor did that really improved our ability to respond is, we send the closest unit. If they're available and they're closest, they might be from the other side of town, but they're driving by your house. GPS will tell us where they are. That's who's coming to your house. This is the, this is the slide that's, that's creating a lot of conversations, and I will, I can summarize this slide by, a senior medic walked in halfway through the conversation at Station Eight and looked at this for about 10 seconds, and he said, what's this? I said, this shows you the percentage of time we're hitting the 90th percentile for reliability. And he looked at it and said, the south side doesn't have the same experience as the north side. And that, that really is the case. The numbers by six, eight, and 10 reflect the percentage of time that we hit that, that five minutes and 20 seconds, that turnout time and the travel time. And the pilot of having State Engine Eight in service ensured that Engine Eight or the second suppression apparatus was in service at Station Eight from January 24 till now. So the thing to be, to be evaluated is, does having a second suppression apparatus at Station Eight improve that number? Does it improve the resident experience? The other way of saying that is, how many suppression apparatus should be at Station Eight? Should it be one or should it be two? Historically, it's sometimes been on paper but not in reality. It's been staffed and not staffed. But we have data from the last now 18 months, and that is what happened with the resident experience over that time. In 2023, Engine Eight was out of service 70% of the time. In 2024, Engine Eight and Truck Eight were both in service every day unless they were out for, literally out of service for training or something like that. But they were in service every day of the, of that 18 months, and it did not move the needle. And that, and I've talked with some of you, and I talk to the people at Station Eight, is there's not a metric that says, continue to do this, because the resident experience has not benefited from it. It's not about what we want something to be or not be, but how we measure that.
So you knew I'd probably jump in here, being the south-side business owner that you went around and told all your stations that I'm not going to run your department, and you and I have sat down the very first time. The, the reason I'm sitting in this seat is probably because of your budget cuts for Station Six. And you remember the first meeting that we had together? Councilman Coleman was there and Rick Clark. Do you remember that? I remember it really, really well, chief. Where you got your map out, showed me the circles, said response times are great, you know, south side's running great. And I said, no, that's not the case. The reason I ran for council is I waited 12 minutes in the parking lot of Barada's Restaurant for an ambulance for one of my residents. Oh, no, that's not true. That's not true. You can skew these numbers however you want to skew it. You could say from the time they pick up the phone to the time they hang it up, your response times are different. Station Eight and Station Nine has always had an engine in it for the longest time, until we don't have enough staff to put them in service. And then you've decided that we're not going to hire enough people. You might be the only department head that I know that have been begged to hire more people, and you've chosen not to do that. And now we're in this position now where, yeah, other things are working really well. Integrated mobile crisis units working really well, and things are going good, but those are two frontline office firefighters that you've taken off the floor to go run that. And we haven't replaced those with new people. You haven't raised the authorized strength. And whether that's your decision, but I think all of us, we've all ran on priority, our priority is, is public safety. We've all campaigned on that. That's what our residents want. And if you choose to take frontline apparatus out of service and you choose to give us a recommendation, then I'm sorry, you two are in the wrong positions.
Okay, Joe.
I'm just saying.
Joe, we are talking, Joe.
This is a frontline apparatus that you're choosing to take out. And you want to keep calling it a pilot? It's not a pilot. You've given it that name because you want to take it out of service. Those units should be both in service. Both of them.
Okay. We need to go forward and hear about what we're doing.
Yeah, I know what we're doing. I don't know what we're doing.
We haven't heard one thing about apparatuses. We're hearing more. Let's get through the presentation.
I don't believe any of these things.
Okay, but that's your...
That's my point. I've heard it before. You all haven't sat up here, other than Councilman Coleman, to hear these same remarks that we've done before.
Joe, we, we have a budget that comes up every year.
Right? And we've, we've passed the budget. The budget shouldn't be a question. We've talked about this.
This is a presentation about our services that we're doing in the fire department. Conversation needs to be had on the budget and how we're implementing what the staffing recommendations.
And we've talked about this budget, mayor. We've talked about this budget. This was taken off the table, and now, after we passed the budget, and I think it was crystal clear, the remarks that, at least when Councilman Coleman and I were in your office, that this was a non-starter for the majority of us.
We haven't heard anything about taking anything out of service at this point.
Yeah, no, no, we have.
We, there has been talk, nothing has been done.
It's fine. We can, we can finish the conversation. I know it's a recommendation from both of them to take a frontline apparatus out of service. That's the recommendation. So you can continue, but that is the recommendation.
Go ahead.
That's why we're sitting here a day after a holiday that we couldn't, that we couldn't reschedule any type of workshop, because this is so important.
Okay, this work session actually had been scheduled, which I missed.
Really? It was never on any of our calendars?
It was on the calendar from the last meeting we had, and it's on the, it had been on the calendar, so let's, let's clarify that. I appreciate it. I don't, you know, I didn't have the most updated, but it had been on the calendar.
It wasn't on my calendar or anyone else's.
It was on the calendar from the last session, work session, but we're not getting to that.
If you'd like me to pick up where I left off, but what I was going to say is, if you want to move those numbers, it takes, it will take an additional station and 22 additional people.
People.
Yeah.
That we've been begging you to hire.
Are we under, we have the manager explain where we at on work staffing, and how many more people are we authorized that we don't have?
Well, I know, what I'm going to provide the public and the council, we'll put this out there with this presentation, is what the authorized strength have been over the last several years.
How many years have we changed it? How many years, since those calls have gone up? When was the last time?
Station 11, Joe.
Right, when we did the safer grant.
Well, we did it in phases. We added in phases.
And we built another station, right?
Right.
So that's where we changed our authorized strength.
So I just want the public to know we have added firefighters. We'll get that data, and we'll put, we'll put that information out there to correct that.
Can I ask a, on this slide?
Do you have a department benchmark?
No. But we have, we have, we have the, the national benchmark. The goal would be 90%. And so we are at best at the 89 and 88 at Stations One and Four. And this, this historically, as far back as we have looked, has been pretty consistent. And the south-side experience is different than the north side. It's, and it's not because there's only 30% of our calls in the south side, and there's 70% of our calls on the north side. This experience is directly tied to the geography of the south side, the street network, and the location of stations. If we want to move those, those 60% numbers, you have to change the station locations, the street network, or both, and add 22 more people with a 12th station.
And chief, it's fair to say that that's why, when we are building new stations, tweaking them by just a few blocks can help us get a better number of them.
We're not even talking about changing one station on the south side.
But that should be the con...
How many times have I asked about it?
Okay, Joe.
When are we building a station on the south side?
That should be the bigger question.
You've sat here for the shortest time. How many times have you heard me say it?
We have, that's why we're having this information to show us that, I believe that should be the bigger consideration, is not a truck, but it should be another station. should be the bigger consideration is not a truck, but it should be another station.
Yeah, can I ask just a question?
Sure.
On this slide in particular?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm particularly interested just kind of on the metrics and what it, what it shows. I mean, so the Station 8 service area, the, the times are between 23 and 24, the times were down a little bit. But.
Yeah.
The Station.
Yeah, pretty much the same, but yeah.
Yeah. Probably margin of error. But the Station 10 times, the response time in Station 10 was significantly better, right? I mean, 48, 48% to 58%, that, that seems like a pretty big jump.
I really think that's from something other than Station 8 because when you look at where Station 8 goes outside of Planning Zone 8, it's been consistent in its response towards Station 10 and Station 6. Station 10 has a much lower call volume, so it has greater volatility. And that's, that's a pretty big jump. But you can't say with certainty that having that engine made that without showing that Engine 8 or Truck 8 went east more often because it did not.
Well, but we would, we would have at least data. So if, I mean, we would, you would be able to tell me how many calls Engine 8 or Truck 8 went to Planning Zone 10.
Yes.
And so if it was going to Planning Zone 10, and that, that's Joe's ward, I mean, Zone 8 is primarily my portion of the South Side, but if it was going.
Sure.
I mean, that, that would be an indication that having that in service was having an impact on that part of.
If the unit, if the unit responded within the four and a half minutes or that, within the 5:20, if it was going that way and it never made it within that response time, it wouldn't change that number. It would not change the resident's experience. That's the important distinction here. If.
Yeah.
One, the numbers are pretty consistent, 23 to 24 when Station 8 went east essentially. But there's not, there's not a greater call volume there, but if it was getting there faster, that would move that number, sure. The same way, the same way that Station 6 going into 10's territory more frequently also would lower that number if it was getting there within five minutes and 20 seconds.
Sure. So.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I guess the one thing I'm trying to get at, like, there is, and maybe what you're telling me is it's an anomaly and more of the calls were like close to the station or whatever it was, but it, it seems like there is something valuable to learn in improving response time from 48 to 58% of the time getting there within five minutes. Regardless of what it is, if you're telling me it's not, not the engine, I mean, it seems like that's something that we, we'd want to know because that's an improvement for our residents and.
What I'm, what I'm telling you is the only way to take that 58 into the 70s or 80s is the addition of a station, the addition of people and/or changes in the street network. Without that change in geography, you're not going to get that one to be in the 70s or 80s or 90s. But Chief, we can get back to the full council on more specifics as to.
Sure.
What the department's reasoning is for why it went up 10 percentage points because that's what you're asking.
That's what I want to understand.
Yeah.
Sure. I want to understand. I mean, I, I get it. I think it's important that we add a fourth station on the South Side.
Sure.
I, I don't know because I'm not, and maybe we'll get to this at the end, but that's, like, where's that in the CIP? Like, that's going to take some time and I want to make sure that we're improving service in the meantime as well.
Mm-hmm. Right.
That's going to take at least 10 years.
I don't think it can.
10 years?
I mean, we're, we're pretty good, really. I think we can do it quicker than 10 years. This is just a different way of, I think, getting at some of the information Josh was trying to get at, but I, like, the, the benchmark that you showed us is probably a good one and it shows that Station 10 increased by 20% almost, you know, in, in its achievement of the benchmark. But, and, and I appreciate that. I'm not, I, that, that's one slice of it. I'm also wondering if there's something to be learned about the way the South Side is now working for those that are over a certain period of time. Have we diminished the number of calls that take 10 minutes or more? And I know that's not a primary benchmark of yours, but like, there's a point at which it takes so long that, that we, that we failed our resident and have we been able to move the needle on that over, and may, and maybe you'll get to that or.
Yeah, well, and just, and just to, so you know this, these are emergent calls. So, so for the call that comes in, a person feels sick and they're alert, conscious, and oriented, and it takes us 11 minutes to drive to their home, that is not a part of these numbers. These are emergent responses. So if we had an emergent response that was 10, 15 minutes, we would know that in real time and address it, but we really don't track the experience of the outside.
Yeah.
Because it's all about the resident's experience in meeting this benchmark.
What, what percentage of the calls are emergent? Did you show that?
I was just going to ask.
Now we've got different, now we got different response times for different type of calls.
That is the industry standard.
Yeah, no, I get it.
We do.
So do you have a breakdown, how many are the, you know, the different types of calls? I guess that by station or areas.
Well, it, and I mean.
Because it's a different type of response. I mean, when.
But.
We, we can give you all of the data, but we can give you literally everything we have, which is fine, but there was no way to do, present all of that.
No, no, I'm just saying for information, if most of the calls are for the ambulance service, maybe we, do we need more ambulances instead of another truck?
We definitely need more ambulances.
So it's like, what is the scope of, for future reference?
Yeah, because we have, you know, the, the reliability is based on the emergent calls and this is also based on our, on our turnout time. And this is a good example where the benchmark shouldn't always be the rule. I don't think it's fair to ask a group of firefighters who are in the station, in the office, fully clothed, ready to get on the, go on the call, get an EMS call and be out the door in a minute. That's pretty fair. It's not really the same in the middle of the night to say, wake up out of a sound sleep, get your stuff on, get to the rig, and go out in a minute. So there has to be some reality in that our people do a really good job on the part that they can control, but they can't hit that minute, minute 20 all the time. That's not realistic. It's not my expectation. And that's why when you get to the end and you're setting your, your benchmarks, you have to use that local information and that realism to say, okay, so it's not always going to be the minute and the minute 20, but maybe it's minute 10 and a minute 30. Those are decisions we make when we're doing the self-assessment manual, say, that's what we're going to report out because we've learned about this process and we've applied it and then we've set it. But we do that informed and we do it based on our experience. I did put together, and this is, yeah.
Before we go on from that, that last slide, I think what Councilmember Coleman was maybe asking, and it's not to, to just do this for, I, I think we could get maybe one or two additional pieces of data that would be pretty informative. So if we had this same slide on reliability and instead of, you know, we have the five minutes and 20 seconds, if we had the travel time bump it to six minutes, what would that show? Like, what's the percentage that, that's getting there within six minutes? And maybe as, as, you know, just two more slides, six minutes and eight minutes, or I don't know if it's five minutes and seven minutes travel time.
My concern would be, my concern would be, I'd be reporting literally a lowering of the standard. Is that confusing? Because you could say, well, if we change it to six minutes and 20 seconds, we'll look better.
No, we're not asking you to change the standard. We're asking just so that we are better informed and to have that, because the data tells the story. All we're asking is to tell more of the story so that we understand where we're at. I mean, I think that, that was the purpose of Councilmember Coleman's question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll produce whatever, but yeah.
Like, I mean, this, this slide is the standard. We're just asking what, what the data shows in terms of the other pieces, right?
Yes. And I think this slide is helpful. Like, that's why, that's why I spoke up at this point. This is helpful for one slice. And like, I mean, I think everything that we do and the things we talk about and the information that council gets has to be pointed at the fact that there's going to be a point in time where the manager and the council have to sell an investment in fire services. And we're going to be, we're going to want crystal clear information that we all trust in order to make that case to, to the residents, to the people who will pay for it, to other departments that might have to wait on other projects, you know, you know, I just think whatever we can get where it, where it really helps us justify a change in the way that we look at our investment in, in fire and EMS, you know, services is going to be helpful. It's not to get anybody. It's let's, let's make sure that we have as much information as possible because I, I am somebody that thinks we have a really, we have a really tough decision, a budget decision, in, in order to show, as you say, that every side of the city has experienced the, the same level of assistance from the fire department.
Yeah. Before I go on to them, and I, I'll kind of quickly walk through the maps, but it shows how we got here geographically. But the story about that is, we want to change those numbers. I can put 10 engines down at Station 8 and that 66 is not going to move. I need either the fourth station and the 20, and the 22 more people to make that happen. I used today's maps to kind of quickly walk through the history of the South Side. So East Edison and East 8th were Stations 6 and, and 8 respectively. And in 1957, they used a temporary station down by the, on Chaffey Road, which I wish they would have held on to that. It would have, it would have prepared us later for better placement. But that's how we looked at the city back in 57. It's also, we had a change of a lot of, we had to change a lot of chief officers, we had to change the council in there. And when they decided to build the current Station 8, which was Station 16 at the time, they put it over on Southwest McKinley, which is fine. And then in 75, we went from 14 stations down to nine. That's when we built Stations 2, 5, 6, 7, 9. And we went from 322 people to 311 people. And that's important because from 75 through the 80s, we continued to trend down in our authorized strength. You know, in 75, we were just starting EMS. So we had a few rescue squads, we called them, and, you know, senior rescuing engineers that ran on them, but it's before we had all the ambulances that we have today. So you jump ahead and you can see 1975 to 1999. Now, 99 is 10 years before completion of the annex in the Southeast. It wasn't nearly the development that there is now or that would be looking forward. But when we built this station, now, when we built Station, I'm going to back up a couple of years here. So in the late 80s, Engine 8 was in service on paper. It was not an operating engine. It had an officer and an engineer assigned to it. It didn't turn a wheel until some of the hiring classes in the 90s. I got assigned there when I got hired in the 90s. We were in service, both of them, most of the time, until we opened up Station 10. Station 10 was one of the, probably the last time we built a new station and opened it without adding additional people to the system. And we had gone from 311 down to about 283 through a series of budget cuts. So we're adding a station. We moved an existing engine down there, but we added a mag squad. We didn't add any people to it.
Was you the head of the union then?
Yeah. Most of you, some of you will remember getting letters from me saying, we are like a baseball team that's not fielding nine players. And at that time, we had eight or nine apparatus out of service at a time. Because when you build a station, you have to add people.
Maybe you ought to put that hat back on and think about your troops then.
So coming off of building that station, change of chiefs from Chief Wakem to Chief Borlander, he used closest unit response versus just the geographic. Because before Station 10, Station 8 went all the way to the east, we would respond for 10, 15 minutes to get that far. That is, I became the chief in 2009 and the first time we do a station study is in 2014. Coming off of the budget cuts where we, our authorized strength was down to 283 and we went down to 273 people. That wasn't, that wasn't by choice. That was, that was by direction. And since that time, this council and both managers have assisted the fire department to build back up our authorized strength. I think if you look back over the last 10 years, there's only one department in the city which has continued to grow and has exceeded its salary budget and has allowed in each hiring to hire over the number of authorized to slow down their, minimize the ripple of, of our total staffing. There were, in that 2014 study, they recommended, they had about 50 recommendations. We implemented about 30 of them. Included in that was relocation or replacement of most of the stations. It was about $91 million of capital expense to be completed within 12 years of 2014, which would be by next year. So we did not have $91 million in our capital and we did not have the capacity under our own policy or anything else at that time to create even a CIP that included that much. So we did two things at that time, and I think this is important. One of the complaints, and it was yours to me, it was, it was Skip's as well, was why don't we have people inside the fire department developing this kind of expertise so we don't have to get an outside vendor to come do a study and tell us what we should know? So we made some investment in the beginnings of that accreditation process and the education to develop the things that we are doing now. And we took some of the, of the 20 things that we didn't, weren't able to do out of the 2014 study, we applied those. Rob Brown was one of the people that worked with Public Safety Solutions. He wasn't the primary. He was one of the other people I've kind of kept in contact with. And he said, what do you do when you don't have any money? Do things that don't cost money. So we worked on department analysis, training, and our prevention efforts and applied those to the fire department. And so between 2014 and 2018, we lowered our ISO rating from a 3 to a 2. Doesn't change the operation on the South Side of the city, but it's important for the insurance cost of the city of Des Moines. That was the first time we've improved our ISO rating in almost 65 years. We also still didn't have any money. So Fire Chief from Muscatine, Fire Chief from Newton, myself, Pro Chiefs, Iowa EMS Association, went to the legislature a couple of years in a row and said, we need to pass a law that allows ground emergency medical transportation money to be come into the city. And we got that passed in 2018. Those revenues did not start coming in until 2020. Those revenues are how we are now funding Station 11 and going forward. There's not $91 million there, but that is a new revenue stream that did not exist in order to tackle the things that came out of that 2014 study. There, there simply wasn't the money there. Not going to bother with COVID because it wouldn't help the conversation at all. When you look at the South Side and you see Station 6, Station 8, Station 10, there might be a misunderstanding that Station 8 handles the fires that are in Station 8's planning zone or that Station 10 handles the fires that are in Planning, Planning Zone 10. That's not the case. Every structure fire that occurs in the city of Des Moines has a minimum of three fire stations that respond to it. Or better said, the units closest that make up the elements of three different fire stations. That's every place in this city. So what that's showing you is not all the stations in that 2025 wards 3 and 4, those are the stations most likely to come south in some way or, or help either 6, 8, or 10. So obviously Station 1 comes down flur quite a bit, things like that. But I thought.
So when the engine's out of service, you drive. The ladder truck? Is that, is that what the deal is? And how much longer is that ladder truck than the engine? How, what's, what's the length of it?
I couldn't.
Size?
Yeah.
You don't know what the size of your ladder truck is?
I think there's, I think there's about eight feet. I'd have to, I'd have to look. No, I, I don't remember the dimensions.
You know what the size of the new ones are?
No.
Because they're longer than the other ones, aren't they? My chief doesn't know that the, that the ladders are, the ladder, the new ladder truck we bought is, is longer than our, the ones that we have? the new ladder truck we bought is, is longer than our, the ones that we have?
The ladder truck with the aerial, uh, the, the junior aerial is shorter than the long one, but no, I don't know the exact dimensions of our-
But they are longer than the engine?
Yes.
And are they made to, I mean, isn't it easier to maneuver the, the engine instead of the ladder if you're bringing someone from the north side of town to the south side of town? Do you think maybe it might be easier to manage the engine instead of a big, long ladder, especially the longer ones? I think up on the north side, they probably can't even make some turns, uh, with those ladder trucks. I think you would probably agree with me on that, wouldn't you? Some of the, some of the streets are kind of tight. You can't, you can't really-
There's some that the engine can't get through either as well, so, yeah.
Yeah, not very many of them. But coming from the guy that, that runs my department that doesn't know how long a ladder truck is, that, that you purchase, uh, do you know the cost, the difference of the cost of each one of them? Can you tell me that?
Yeah, we're running over 2.2 million on our ladder trucks now.
Right. And then how much is an engine?
May we continue with the presentation?
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand?
Just, just over a million.
That should be part of the presentation also. Because it's, those things are a lot more expensive and a lot harder to get around. And your recommendation is to drive those ladder trucks instead of the engine.
So, when you see the, the map on the right, that's not a, that's not a street network, four and a half minute response time. It's just simply a way to visualize where stations exist now and what the future might look like. But there's a reason why there's this asterisk by the number 3 and number 2. Currently in the CIP, replacement of Station 3 is in, it's about a year out from design from today. The exact location of Station 3 will, will drive, do we do anything with Station 2 either in its location or the apparatus that are at Station 2? And obviously, there's a cascading effect. So, those aren't certain yet because we haven't done that design yet, and we haven't bought property for Station 3. But in the, in the future planning of the south side, the, I would say, the lower left future, this lower center future is where they put the temporary station in 1957. And, um, would have been a great place to, to keep doing it. But we need to look at it that way. There are other things that aren't on that map that are important as well. The Des Moines International Airport, going back to the 2014 study, recommended, the, the study recommended that we work with the airport in staffing and in station placement. And that was the time of change of the board authority, and we investigated that. There was not interest to do that. Uh, we provided them, uh, what that might look like financially. I still think that that's a possibility. Um, we haven't asked the board that, um, but that needs to be a consideration. At that time, they were switching to pro tech, going private on their, uh, on their fire protection, and then they lost the planes. Uh, there has to be points in time when there's lease agreements that come up, and, and perhaps that's the time to do that. But I, I do think, working with the airport authority, the, the military wing out there, that that's one possibility. We have to continue to do as we have in the northeast with Altoona. We have an operational agreement with them that helps serve city of Des Moines by them. We need to explore with, uh, Carlisle. Is there anything that could be beneficial mutually between us and them, Norwalk and the southwest, West Des Moines in the, in their southeast, our southwest? And, um, and as well as, you know, up, up the road, Windsor Heights, Clive, and Johnston for, for additional coverage on the outside. Because the same situation, you know, you can always make the argument that an additional engine is better than not having an additional engine. But having a fire in, in, it's west or east of Station 10, or west of Station 8, or, uh, north of Station 9, is the exact same scenario for the second call or the bad fire. More help is coming from further away. And that kind of brings me back to the, we do 33,000 calls a year, and we have to be set up to handle all of them with metrics that are reliable and reportable. And you shouldn't have to have me come to the council to say what those metrics are. You should be able to click on the website and say, what's our response time look like? What's our turnout time look like? How often are we hitting the mark? That would be, I would think it would be easier to simply have that available all the time to anybody who's got a computer.
Yeah. I think it'd be great to get data like that on there. I, I mean, I do think the council should be digging into data a little bit more than the general public, but I think we should be informing the general public of what's our metric, what's the goal. I agree with that. I have a question on, on this slide. Um, you know, when we had that reliability slide, and part of the discussion was the experience on the north side's different than the experience on the south side. And, and the case to be made, and I, I'm bought into it, right? We need another station on the south side. The question I have is, is sort of the phasing, because it looks like Station 2 and Station 3 are next in line from a replacement perspective rather than building an additional station.
3 is next in line because it's in the CIP. I wanted to put an asterisk by 2 because that could change what's in that station, or does it change the location?
Right. I, I guess my, my question is, rather than replace an existing station, if we know the experience on the south side is, I mean, it's a pretty significant gap. And, and that's what gets all, all of the attention, right? On the service level, it's the debate about engine in service versus not. It's all on the south side right now.
Right.
So, would it make sense to, to speed things up so that we're looking at, at a additional station on the south side sooner so that we can start this process of getting the service level right on the south side and narrowing the gap between that residential difference, depending on where you live in the city?
I think, I think there's two, two points really. The eventual, the location of Station 3 is going to be really-
You probably have to use your mouse if you're wanting to-
Oh.
I don't know if it'll show.
Show there. Well, we'll just do this. Where, uh, where it says, uh, Highway 163 there, how close, uh, where it says Station 3, the, the highway marker there, how close to that, uh, 163 or far away is Station 3 will determine our ability to respond on the east or west side of the railroad tracks, uh, the fairgrounds, anything that runs to the, the far southeast? And then does that impact how we use Station 2? I think that's separate from, either one of those things won't make a, a bit of difference to the south side in that you can see between Station 6 and Station 10, southeast 22nd and Evergreen, there's not a way to get there in four and a half minutes from Station 6 or Station 10. So, regardless of what happens, uh, north of there, we're going to have to add and, and move stations, because you can't just add one into the mix and have two stations really close to each other to avoid building one street. So, I don't know if that scenario looks like a, a, a series of stations, like similar to what we did in the, in the seventies where we had a similar floor plan. That's, uh, we have great engineers and facilities people to help us with, understand that. Uh, where you likely have to build two at once to get the change that you want. But it took us two and a half years in the seventies at a time when those, each building cost $300,000.
So, what is the cost of a new station like 11? What did it end up costing?
New station's right about 13, and I think Station 4 is going to be at 14 million.
14 million. Before, but Station 4 obviously has some extras.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, enough. But I think that's the question is where is, where's the priority? If it is the south side, then we need to work with the airport because if there is some compatibility and then build additional stations.
Yeah.
Can't do it sooner than later.
And the reason 3 is up next is, is just the condition of the building.
Yeah.
There's a point where you, you can't rehab it more than we have. Kind of like, and, 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 I'm, this is Never Lost, Councilman Gatto. Station 10 was built as a temporary building. It was 10 years as a fire station, 10 years as a park building. We've suffered through it. It's not a great building. It's not a place where you're happy to have your firefighters go, but it happens to cut that travel time in half. So, do you replace the one that was, uh, started off as temporary, or do you replace the one that could fall onto the ground? And you got to do that one first. Councilmember Voss?
So, I think Josh's question was, would it make sense to, um, jiggle things around on the south side and to move that ahead of, of replacing Station 3? Or, or are we locked in, we need to replace Station 3 first?
I think that we have to have that as a discussion as far as the budget and why, why it's so critical that-
They're all important.
It's all important, and we just had a $17 million cut. So, I think that this is why we have to have an overall discussion of the total budget. We just entered, we just had a large cut this year. So, I'm just saying, for our planning purposes, we have to determine based on what our budgets are going forward, how we can maneuver to put in another station on the south side.
But we can't shift the burden off the south side back to the east side. Because for the east side, the east side suffered for the longest time, and that's why we had to build Station 11.
I'm not saying you should-
I mean, their response times was probably worse than what the south side is right now. That's why we had to build that. The answer isn't to do that. I don't know, I mean, I've been saying this for a long time, and I know we have a funding source. But if the, the answer is to start building stations and hiring people, that should have hired people for the longest time. I mean, we, we've been through that. I don't know. Do we go for a referendum? Do we do bonding? Do we need it that bad that we need to be able to figure out so we can go build some more stations? If we have a funding stream that's going to pay for it eventually, maybe we do it that way. I don't know what the answer is. That's what your job is to, to give us recommendations. Not to give us recommendations of cutting a frontline apparatus. I would hope that, I have bigger expectations from you, that you would come up with something different than this workshop that we're going through right now to cut a frontline apparatus.
Understand the answer might be both. That, we, the data is showing one thing for Engine 8. It is also showing that the future needs to look like what we see on the right. And, and that future on the right is likely five to six, maybe seven years out. Okay? And, but at the moment, I want to spend our money wisely, and I, for the, I don't know, the last year and a half, we've had this information, and it's, we've added to it better and better. But we haven't had this type of data in the past to, to help us answer the questions of where the stations should be located.
Scott, with all due respect-
Yeah.
We sat here, Chief De Kip sat here, you guys made budget cuts, you cut Medic 6 and Medic 4 and said we weren't going to have-
10 years, 10 years.
10 years ago.
10 years ago.
And with, from your recommendation, said that response times wouldn't change, everything was going to be great. And you know what? Since we've done that, we've put in both of them back in service and left 1. And I don't know, do you have one at 2 now?
No.
Do you have a medic yet there? Because we probably need one there also.
We tried one there, but there was not enough runs.
So, I mean, your, your data that you've given to us in the past hasn't really paid off real well. It hasn't really worked real well. Because you told us to get rid of the ambulances 10 years ago, the medics, and now they're back. And we need probably more of them. But that was under your recommendation and with Rick Clark here.
To be clear, when we did that change with the medics, our, our response times didn't change. The reason why we had to go back was the people on, on Medic 1 can't do that many runs.
Well, don't you think you should have known that? Don't you think that's as a leader of your organization-
But as far as the resident's experience using current data, that stayed the same. And that has been one thing, and it's why we stay away from average response times. Because since we put in, uh, Station 11, our average response times looked pretty good. And that's not good enough to take care of the residents of Des Moines. It has to be, are we getting there the 90th percentile now?
Chief, all due respect, you, you giving me data means nothing anymore.
Okay, let's-
Because what you've done in the past has proven to me, you'll say whatever you have to say to get what you want. And that's not to the res, that's not the benefit that our residents need. I'm sorry.
So, we have to buy the data that has been-
The data is, is skewed.
So, okay, we, you don't like the data?
No, I, the data has been wrong in the past, and we've made decisions on data from his recommendation, and we went back. Because those recommendations have been incorrect. I'm not doing it again. And I hope you guys would agree with that.
That's fine. We are learning where we need another station. We know we need another station. We need to determine as a council where we're going to go with future budgets, and can we wait five or seven years? And we will ask the city manager to come back with recommendations on how we can handle the staffing, if we are at full force, not full force. I don't know where we're, haven't really got that answer. I guess, do we need authorized to increase it? But that all becomes part of the budget discussion that we can have, and we will get more information on that. Because it is more important to have it staffed. You know, I want to make sure we have the right staff, and we need to make sure we have the fire stations in the right locations. Obviously, our city has grown. It has changed. Back in the budget cuts of the, Councilwoman Coleman was first on, how many years? Uh, and so, we are looking at how we can handle it in the best way. We know some things are shifting. We know some things have been put in with our mental health crisis team, making huge roads, having medics in our CIS also has made big changes, which put a lot of pressure, I think, on Station 1, right? Uh, so, coming up with some alternatives and other methods. But we definitely can see that we need to readdress how we're applying and doing fire. And it's not that we're, we can, we need to do better based on how our city is laid out.
I mean, I, I know there was one additional slide. I don't know if we're planning on talking about that, but it, I mean, seems like a pretty important slide because one of the things I want to understand is the-
This one?
No, it, sorry. I guess there are two or three additional slides. But it's the Station 4 and then the accreditation piece. And I, I want to understand where we're going on accreditation because I think that's a pretty important thing. And I, um, I'd like to understand just the work that needs to be done a little better.
To finalize it.
Right. And then that's the other piece is the timeline. And I wouldn't mind having a, a concrete goal from a timeline perspective that, hey, this is our goal for when we're going to finally get through this accreditation process.
Correct.
And, and so, we have a, a number that council can, can be like, okay, we said this is going to be done in '26 or '27, and we can keep asking, are we on track to get done with accreditation process at that time?
Last comment on that slide is, uh, those four words of future, that's how you move the resident experience on the south side. Our Station 4 replacement, uh, is going well. I know some of you have had a chance to, to go through the facility. I'm not going to talk about the facility itself other than say, the, um, construction manager has really been outstanding, identified problems, corrected problems, let us know about it before we had to learn about it on our own and report it to them. So, it's been a really good process. We have learned a lot from Station 11, incorporated that into new Station 4. And those concepts, particularly around the things that we can engineer to help firefighters get decontaminated, be clean, be safe, uh, in those kind of ways, I'm really happy about that, and that will be a part of any stations that we go. And of course, um, so we build new stations, we want to improve on previous lessons learned. On our accreditation, we have been a registered agency for a long time. And so, you know, the, the, will it take two and a half years? Will it take three and a half years? All that kind of stuff. It's basically, it's the big gaps in between those, those things. The self-assessment manual is set up for an 18-month, uh, process. So, we've done the community risk assessment. That was that first bucket. We've done the standards of cover. Um, we published the strategic plan created by, um, 42 members of the department. Uh, there's currently, um, 35 members of the department that are waiting, um, to start their work on facilitation, implementation of the, of the 2024, 2028 plan. Like to see those all done by 2027 so we can spend the last year of this plan creating the next, uh, five-year plan. And we are using the, we are using the methodologies. Uh, this is how we are creating data. There's not a, there's not a different way to do it. And so, going forward, this will be the source for, for the information that we get. The next step in accreditation is completion of that self-assessment manual and becoming a candidate agency when you, or, uh- a candidate agency, or an applicant agency. When you become a candidate agency, you have, a team will come in from the outside, and they review your processes. They give content validity to having a firefighter show a skill, as it's described in the Self Assessment Manual, checking our records to say that they are, are done as we say that they are. If we became an applicant agency today, it would be the end of '26 when we would complete it.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
You said that you're looking at the implementation of strategic plan would be about 2027. And so my question is, what can we do to speed that up? What can we do to get this, to have the accreditation done and awarded to us sooner?
The, I think, I probably didn't give a good, the creation of the plan is required within the accreditation process. Implementing it is for us. It's not for accreditation. So it's designed to be over several years, and we will continue to work on it. So as far as accreditation goes, risk assessment's done, standards of cover is done, the strategic plan creation is done. The last piece to be created is what's called the Self Assessment Manual. It's an articulation. It's a narration of literally everything we do, from maintenance to, you know, cleaning to response. But us doing the strategic plan is because the work of those 42 members is important in the areas of training, service delivery, health and safety, recruitment and retention. There's five goal areas, and so 35 people have said, we want to work on that. And so, since it's the, runs through 28, I want to use the last year to create the next one.
So there's, so is there any way to speed it up?
We can speed it up, but it does not, implementing the strategic plan does not speed up accreditation.
No, how do we get accreditation?
I think she needs accreditation.
What, when do we get accreditation? When do we get the accreditation, and how much longer does it take?
I was just trying to help.
Thank you. Is that right?
Yeah. Can I, on this subject, can I, I'm treading into Mike's professional experience, but like, I'm always fascinated at like a building schedule, where, you know, they have like lines going across that give the timeline by months and years, that would give us a little idea about how they overlap, what happens, and where the end game is. I would say it would help the council manager, if you were engaged in that, and if you signed off on a sheet, that really helped us understand what was realistic, and what are the different, what are the different line items that have to be addressed?
And the timeline.
And I do think that we have the timeline, you know, in that kind of building, you know, like the building schedule that I'm-
Danger.
And then we'd kind of see that, oh, this one has to be done before this or this. And then there's a level of accountability that, you know, the councils has to hold the manager to, because you're the one that reports to us. But I, like, I think that would be helpful for all of us to partly answer Linda's question. And then you, then we might come back and say, you know, 20-whatever is too long. What do we have to do? But I think, I think it would be constructive to the end that we had a detail about how this all matches up and where the end game is on accreditation. And I realize there's probably not an end game, because you've got to re-accredit as soon as you get accredited and-
Yeah, but every five years.
Yeah. So, but that kind of flow chart, I think, I think would really help me, and I'll bet it helps.
I would think it, yeah. I think so. And also, this, within this accreditation process, I assume there are costs along the way?
Um, yes.
Or is it time, well, time?
Yes. There's costs. We've stayed at the registered agency, because it's the cheapest way to stay in the game, while we get all the benefit of the methodology, and then you get a bigger expense based on size.
And if you explain, who actually gives that accreditation? Is it that organization?
National organization.
The national organization.
And as long as I'm making suggestions, I would, when I arrived on the council back, I was impressed by the way in which the manager's office and the police department organized their effort to go through their accreditation. The deployment of staff, the accountabilities. Like, I think it would be really helpful for the council to know what you learned about that, Scott, and how we can use the best pieces of that in the, in this. And maybe not everything was perfect there, but I was impressed from day one as to the laser focus that your department and the leadership of the police department had. And I think that was communicated by the council then, and I applaud you all. But I think we need that same layer of focus, and, you know, that usually doesn't happen without the manager's eyes and time on it.
Definitely some lessons learned that we can apply here. A dedicated staff and things of that nature. And we'll have the timeline we'll put together to finish this out, the 18 months of self-assessment. And then really, it's up to the accreditation.
Yeah. They meet twice a year, where you go in front of a panel and-
So it's their timing at that point, so we'll put that together.
Does anyone?
Mayor, may I make a couple of quick observations? One, I like the idea of the timeline. That also would tell us, and I'm not saying we need any consultants, but if we need to bring in some other people, take care of them first, schedule that first, so that we, that just accelerates the process. Two, I think I heard you say, Chief, that for the EMS vehicle that goes out, that they, that three people are needed, so therefore another vehicle is sent because we're one person short?
About 12,000 times a year, the minimum number of people to handle the call is three. And if it's an EMS call, there's only two people and an ambulance.
So is there another solution to get that third person there, rather than sending a whole nother vehicle? I don't know, but that just thought came to my mind.
Yeah. The only one I'll say out loud is, it would take additional people at this point to make that third person happen.
My last comment would be, when I think of Des Moines Public Schools, every so many years, an analysis is done, where are people moving to? Where do the schools need to be located? This is a similar thing.
It's a demographic study.
Every 10, 20 years, where should we be? I always believe in planning for the most optimum solution, regardless of cost, understanding that cost will always have an impact, but we should look first toward the best solutions, and then tackle the money the best that we can. Otherwise, I think we're cutting ourselves short. And I don't know how the fire department and your analysis of determining where stations are located, how do you project where people and businesses are going to be? Is that part, in part through coordination with staff, the planning staff? Because we approve where people are going to live, we approve where businesses are going to be, we approve where sometimes more hazardous types of businesses are going to be. So we, I would like to think that we have some impact on where we're growing and where these stations need to be.
I think, I think there's probably better communication now than there was 26 years ago, as far as talking to economic development and talking to engineering about, because we could plan out stations that are good geographically, but wouldn't match up with the city for 30 years. And so we need to make sure that those things are also part of the, part of that.
So can you go back a couple of slides and show that future? Where it said the future? Can you go back and where that triangle is where it's where?
The maps?
The maps?
The future. As he's going back, I just want to add that council, through zoning and comp plan, land use, determine what can be built within the city. But obviously, private developers are going to decide the timing of that. You guys are addressing infrastructure and things of that nature. But the reality is, we're on the timeline of private development, so it might take decades for it to play out.
So with the help of economic development, there is a development that we just did a development agreement, that could be $200 million to $300 million worth of private homes that you didn't even include in this map.
Well, this is, this is just an illustration.
Right. I'm just like, you said you, I mean, you guys work together. We just passed a development agreement that would include that portion of the city. It might be 20 years before it's all built out, but that is, should be part of the future development of the city. You might want to include that in, talk to economic development.
Yeah, this is, this is not, this is just an illustration that we need four stations across the south side. That isn't, that isn't like the map on the left.
Gotcha.
If there's nothing else?
There's one ask of the-
I always ask, because this is, it's worth it, and then it's the last conversation I have with the neighbors before we do kind of a fun quiz. But there are a lot of things that people can do that help the Des Moines Fire Department. And if everybody did all of these things, we'd be pretty bored, and we'd be happy about it. Being proactive and having a physician and checking on your neighbors is certainly key, number one. Two is slow down in Des Moines and wear your seatbelts, because nobody wants to respond to a car accident. Check your smoke alarm and carbon monoxide detectors, and have a fire escape plan that you can crawl through. I like to add in the word crawl, because if you can't crawl from that part of your house, you might want to think about how you would get out. The number one cause of fires in Des Moines, in Polk County, in Iowa, in the US, in the world, is cooking. We burn food a lot everywhere. And so knowing how to snuff those out. Any questions? Councilmember Voss has asked a couple of different times about fire blankets, they're good, having a cookie sheet, that's good, knowing how to turn off your oven, your stove, et cetera, that's good. We have about 300 structure fires a year out of those 33,000 calls. We can knock out a whole lot of them by taking care of candles and cooking. And of course, Yahtzee says, share this list. I'm available all the time. You can come back at any time and update this. I appreciate the mayor and council's opportunity to come talk about fire services and accreditation. Our people do a lot of good work, and it feels good to tell you guys about it.
Okay, thank you. We will reconvene. Our next meeting is July 14. And they'll be talking about our next upcoming topics of regulatory options, I believe, for vape shops and liquor stores, will be the next work session. So, anyway, we will adjourn this work session, and thank you for being here.